You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one, heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Well, good evening. Like to welcome everyone to the Monday, May 13th, 2019 Fayetteville City Council Meeting. At this time, we would ask that Dr. Kathy Matthews, Senior Pastor at Well of Living Waters Ministry, if she would come to the podium. We ask that all would rise for the invocation. Ask that immediately following the prayer, if Ms. Diana would join us up front to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and you would please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. All gracious and wise Father, we come this afternoon to just offer a thanksgiving for all that you have done for us, for the city of Fayetteville, for our council, and for those who are concerned on a day-to-day basis. Father, we ask for your wisdom tonight. We ask for your knowledge, and we ask for your guidance to be upon this council. We pray, God, that resolutions will be made that are in your favor, that are in the favor of the people. Father, we ask now that you would empty us out of right so that we can understand what is right. And we pray that you would just bless us with a city that is favored by you, with a city that is on the move, and a city that is attracting to others, that families of God will be blessed and families will receive all that you have designed for the families to receive. We thank you for each council member. We thank you for their diligence during the everyday basis of God, and we thank you for the city, the people that have come and that have come to give their measure and add their parts. Now, we just ask that you would bless us with the understanding and the knowledge that we need to get every task accomplished, that every project will be successful. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Ms. Diana? Like to lead us in the pledge allegiance? That's all right. All right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Miss that. Well, thank you, Ms. Diana, and she is a Boy Scout representing, uh... No, no, she's a Boy Scout. Yes, sir. Right, I didn't get her troop number. Pack eighty-two. Well, thank you for joining us tonight. Pastor, would you tell us a little bit about yourself and your ministry?
I am Kathy Matthews of Well of Living Waters Ministry. We seated on 117 West Mountain Drive. We've been in that location for twenty years. We have housing development over on that particular campus that we serve the city with, and we call it somewhat a second chance. Many people have been evicted out of homes or their living quarters for one reason or another, and we sometimes provide a second opportunity to give them an opportunity to get themselves together and get back on track with that. We've served in the capacity of pastoring for twenty-two years, but we've been at that location for twenty years.
Well, thank you so much for joining us. Thank you for what you do for our community, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, this time typically I defer to Councilmember Jensen, but I will change a little bit tonight and defer to Councilmember Waddell. Councilmember Waddell, do you know the young lady that is joining us tonight?
I believe I do. Everybody, this is Ray Vialle Musser. She is a senior with the Reset Academy, which is a homeschool. Her principal is none other than myself, Tisha Waddell. She is my daughter. She is graduating this year, and if I may take a moment of personal privilege and just ask everyone to please salute my daughter for her accomplishment in graduating. And all the other seniors with our FCYC group, and she is here representing FCYC.
So, as she said... Yes. As she said, my name is Ray Vialle, and I'm actually the Secretary of the Fayetteville Community Youth Council, and I came to just give a few updates. Recently, we attended our last conference where we did apply for Most Outstanding Youth Council, and I am proud to say that we brought it home, but we also want to share with you all the closing remark on our entry to how we won. So, it went like this. "As a council, we believe outstanding character isn't just shown when times are easy and the cameras on. We strive to make our office a space for growth and idea development. The fact that you may walk in the door tired and discouraged, thinking you don't have much to offer, and immediately be met by another member standing by your side and motivating you to continue doing great things not only for yourself but your community, shows outstanding leadership. Some members walk in the door with no voice and leave their senior year with a new family, internships, and ideas that will move our generation forward. Above all, our advisor tells us to shoot for the stars, but also supports that statement with her actions, and this speaks volumes of our standard for character. I say all of this to reiterate that, of course, behind any outstanding advisor and community, you have an outstanding youth council, and this is what makes the Fayetteville Community Youth Council outstanding, and I'm proud to say that we brought that award home for the city of Fayetteville. At this conference, I also stepped down from my State Secretary seat, and I was proud to bring in two new Fayetteville members on our board, so we now hold the seat for Vice Chair and Sergeant Arms on the North Carolina State Youth Council. We also attended the Police Ball with a few members of our city council. That was a great experience. We were able to help raise money through their raffles. And this year, we had the honor to present twenty-seven seniors with the Fayetteville Community Youth Council Honors Court, and we're just glad to be moving forward, and I just want to say thank you guys for your support, and it has been my pleasure serving with you all this year as your secretary, and I look forward to doing great things coming back."
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome. This time, we will have a Dogwood Festival follow-up. Ms. Allen, Executive Director of the Dogwood Festival? Hello?
Hey!
How are you?
Good evening, Mayor Colvin and councilmembers. I had to write this down or I'd get up here and act crazy, so thank you for giving me time on your agenda tonight. My name's Malia Allen. I'm here representing the Fayetteville Dogwood Festival and our very dedicated Board of Directors. As some of you may know, this was my inaugural year as the Executive Director. Attendance numbers were amazing, the festival was a huge buzz around town, and overall, it went off without a hitch. I came here tonight to thank the city for all the contributions you make to the success of our festival. I never realized until I was the ED just how much the city contributes in donated services from waste management, parks and wrecks, police, fire, and more. It was overwhelming how all those departments showed up for us with smiles. You know, they were out there all night, working, sweating, doing all the things that we needed them to do with a smile on their face. It was great. At the end of my first successful event, I was never more proud of my city and thankful for everything that you guys do. I'd like to say a special thank you to Erica Brady, who is not here, but she was more than helpful, and I couldn't have done this without her help. On behalf of our Board of Directors, volunteers, vendors, and attendees of the Dogwood Festival, I'd just like to say thank you for everything that you do for us. And lastly, on behalf of Kainoa and PK Allen, they asked me to tell you how much they love the baseball stadium. Go Woodpeckers!
All right. Thank you, Ms. Allen. Councilman Chris?
Mr. Mayor, may I say something to Ms. Allen? Ms. Allen, stand up, please. You can stay there. To take on that monumental task, and this being your rookie year, so to speak, as the head of it, I just want to express the gratitude of not simply this council but the citizens in this city for the magnificent job that you did, and I think we all owe her a standing ovation. I really do.
I want to say one more thing. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that, but I definitely want you guys all to know that I could not have been as successful as I was without my Board of Directors. They are out there killing it. Every single time we have a festival, they contribute so much time, and I wouldn't be successful without them, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand plus in the city of Fayetteville in one weekend, so that's amazing. Good job, Dogwood Festival Committee. At this time, I would ask for a few recognitions, certificate of appreciation. If I could ask that Fire Chief Mike Hill, if you can meet me at the podium, or Mr. Wayner
Okay, well, tonight we have a certificate of excellence presented to Mr. Wayner Burt with profound appreciation for your selfless and spontaneous act of kindness to render assistance to a citizen of Fayetteville in a time of great need, given this thirteenth day of May, 2019. Signed, Mayor Mitch Colvin.
And we also, we have a commendation from the Fire Department we would like to present also. This commendation is presented in recognition of the life-saving actions during a witnessed medical emergency on March 28th, 2019, 5642 Bragg Boulevard. The application of your training and selfless decision to intervene led to the sustainment of human life and subsequent recovery of a cardiac arrest patient. Your commitment to your fellow man demonstrates an exemplary model for us all to emulate. Additionally, your actions represent alignment with the core values of the city of Fayetteville Fire Department of serving with respect, and your commitment to making the city of Fayetteville a safer place for all.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I originally planned to write something special, but I figured I'd just speak from the heart. First and foremost, I'd like to express my gratitude for just being able to be recognized for something for me just seems like an act of kindness, something so small. If it wasn't for the men that were there to help me on the day that I needed assistance the most, and just the help of my mother, this beautiful woman here, if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be able to stand here and receive this award tonight. I just want to thank all the people that were involved. I want to thank the Fire Department. I want to thank all the people that were able to have a part in just making sure that the gentleman that needed help was able to see another day of life, and I just want to say thank you for just having me here tonight.
Yes, could we please have Ms. Hannah Carroll, Affiliate President of the National Alliance of Mental Health Illness, come to the podium with the mayor, please?
Yes, I would like to read the proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas the month of May has been designated Mental Health Month and special, whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, adults, and families today is fundamental to the future of Cumberland County, and whereas the need for comprehensive good mental health and education for children, youth, adults, and family places upon our community and critical responsibility. And whereas, as it is appropriate, that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts towards our community's mental health and well-being. And whereas, NAMI, Cumberland, Hornet, and Lee Counties, National Alliance on Mental Illness, through its unique approach to serving children and adolescents, is effectively caring for mental health needs of our children, youth, families, and our community. And whereas, it is important to all citizens of Fayetteville to come together and celebrate a time dedicated to the elimination of stigma and creation of awareness. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the city council and more than two-hundred-and-eight-thousand citizens, do hereby honorably proclaim the 31st of May in the year 2019 in honor of Mental Health Awareness Community Inclusion Day. In witness thereof, I set the hand of the cause of the great seal of Fayetteville on the 25th day of April, 2019.
Thank you so much for this proclamation. I'd like to take just a moment to let you know what inclusion is. You know, there's more than forty million people in the U.S. that live with mental health challenges each day in their day-to-day reality, and I'm here today to ask the city of Fayetteville, to ask this council to let us in this city make our community a place where all citizens can feel welcome, where all citizens can be included, not sit on a silo, but be included. Everyone has a right to be included, to be honored for their uniqueness and their ability. We need to allow them in our community to be welcome and embraced, and we at NAMI, we are those thankful that we have this opportunity to come here and to ask you. And in celebration of us making this community, the Cumberland County, a community of inclusion, a community of awareness, where we know, we understand, we care about people. NAMI has a campaign called Why Care?, and it really impacts the... It lets you see how just caring can impact and make a difference with somebody living with so many challenges from day to day. And we have an event that's going on on May 31st, the day that's declared as Mental Health Awareness and Inclusive Day at Smith Recreation Center at six o'clock, and we do, do hope that each and every one of you will join us, so we, the city of Fayetteville, can make Cumberland County from one corner to the other corner, a place where all citizens can feel welcome and included.
Thank you all for the great work you do here in our community. At this time, item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. See, Councilmember Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it pleases the council, I would move that we amend tonight's agenda to reflect the following. Item 8.0, which is the public hearing, be moved to item 5.1, and that we add item 7.02, which is a resolution of the city council of the city of Fayetteville requesting assistance with the city's legislative priorities that are outlined.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. There was a motion by Councilmember Arp. I saw a light by Councilmember Dawkins for a second. I saw you. The lights work, my friend. All right, council, any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda?
I did have one question, Mr. Mayor. Did you say we're moving the public forum?
Yeah, the intent is to move the public forum up to the first item of business, so we don't make people wait for all our...
Okay, and that'll be 5.1.
Yes, sir. Correct. 5.1.
Thank you, Councilman Arp.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, council, I'll look to you for your votes. And we are joined on phone by Councilmember Wright. Councilmember Wright, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, so we're voting on the approval of the agenda with the changes. What's your pleasure?
Green.
Green, all right. Well, all right, council, Madam Clerk, that motion carries unanimous? All right, thank you. Public hearing, item 5.1. Public hearing, item five point one. Individuals which desiring to speak at public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before seven P.M. this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed to each side of the, to each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each, unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated, in which case, the single spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, asks that... I see the attorney's light. Madam Attorney?
Public forum.
Oh.
Mayor, I apologize.
I'm reading public hearing.
Yes.
Should it be public forum?
Yes.
All right. All right, I'll start over. Thank you. Public forum. This is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than thirty minutes. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you are here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda under public hearing, ask that you please reserve your comments until that public hearing. So when your name is called by the city clerk, ask that you come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the light that's located on the podium change from green to yellow, means you have thirty seconds left to speak. When you see the red light come on, that means your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we are unable to extend the given time. That being said, Madam Clerk, ask you to call your first speaker.
We have eleven speakers signed up for this evening. The first speaker is Ms. Jenny Deans. Ms. Jenny Deans. Not here. Our next speaker is Ms. Carol McDonald. Ms. Carol McDonald. Not here. Our next person to sign up is Ms. Pat Wright.
Hi. Pat Wright, two-twenty Woodcrest Road. Thank you all for providing a forum for us to come talk about our concerns. I'm here tonight as part of a contingent of business owners and merchants downtown who have come to express our views about parking during ballgames. Would those representing downtown businesses please stand? So these people represent event venues, small business, retail, residents, restaurants, and service industry. Each group has a specific need concerning parking during game days, and that's why we're here today. Thank you. My partner and I own Skyview and the Rainbow Room, Dream Loft, Moonlight Communications, and a nonprofit that holds a film festival downtown. Everything we do is downtown. I'm representing businesses that hold events. That includes the obvious ones like Skyview and the Rainbow Room, but also some less obvious ones such as Fascinate You, Wine &amp; Design, The Escape Factor, Tokyo Retro Gaming, Greg's Pottery, The Gilbert, Sweet Palette, and many more. Event the businesses bring in large groups of people for a particular reason. For us, we have weddings, meetings, birthday parties, graduations, with hundreds of people in attendance. These events, and those at other businesses, are often held on game days. It's become more challenging to get people to hold their events at, in downtown when they have to pay ten dollars for parking. Jan and I have had an event facility here since two thousand one, when downtown was practically a ghost town. We wanted to bring people to the heart of our city to see what a great place it could be. One of the selling points we always touted was free parking. So we know that's not the way it's going to be anymore. The ballpark has sparked some exciting growth, and free parking is a thing that has passed now. But going from free to ten dollars a car is onerous for small businesses, particularly owners of the event facilities. Clients who have already reserved our spaces are not happy with the unplanned expense, and those who are considering booking a space are listening to see how we resolve this issue before they sign on the dotted line. In fact, several of us have already lost business because of the parking fees. Clients can go to a competitor outside of downtown and park for free. The parking issue is complex with many types of businesses, each potentially needing a different solution. I hope we can work together to come up with a resolution that will work for the city and all these downtown businesses. I don't have the answer, but I would be willing and happy to sit down and discuss options so we can all experience a win with the addition of Segra Stadium. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Diane Parfitt?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for this opportunity to speak. Oh, I forgot to tell you my name. I'm Diane Parfitt, and I live at one-twelve Hay Street, above my bookstore. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members, for this opportunity to speak about the effects of the current parking regulations during the woodpeckers' home baseball games. I am here tonight representing retail merchants and business owners in downtown. First, I would like to state that the majority of us are very excited about the baseball team being here and the potential for a win-win for everyone. We know there will be growing pains, but the pain of ten dollars parking that the city rushed into was poorly conceived and unnecessary. They justify it by saying that taxpayers are, quote, "subsidizing" downtown parking, whether they come downtown or not. What most people don't know, however, is the city takes fifty thousand dollars every year from the MSD tax fund to help pay for parking. Who pays the MSD tax? Downtown property owners. Downtown was selected for the stadium for many reasons, but one big reason was for the fans to see the thriving arts and entertainment district our downtown has become with galleries, boutiques, restaurants, and even a small bookstore. It was hoped that this would generate new business and promote the growth of downtown, increasing the revenue for the MSD tax, a win-win for everybody. Has that happened? I venture to say no, and I would suggest that it is because of the high prices for parking. Who is this affecting? Established businesses, which have already seen a decline in foot, in foot traffic during games. Who wants to pay ten dollars to browse in a small boutique where you might spend ten to twenty dollars? Our regular customers stay away on game nights. Employees, many of whom barely make minimum wage but now have to pay ten dollars to park. And yes, even baseball fans. Those who don't come early enough to grab a free parking space now have to pay ten dollars plus the cost of multiple tickets for their families. This is not good for the woodpeckers who want their fans to keep coming back and not just come to one game. Due to tonight's time limit, what I have presented is only a summary of the issues. We have many ideas that we would like to share with you. Let's look at the parking study together and come up with a way to implement its recommendations in a way that does make this a win-win for everybody. We all hope that this will happen. In the meantime, please act now to reduce the cost of parking and set aside some lots for customers and employees. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hank Parfitt?
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Hank Parfitt, and I'm at one-twelve Hay Street, and I too live above the bookstore. Mayor Colvin and members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity. I just want to clarify a point that my wife just made about subsidizing downtown parking. A recent article in The Observer said that taxpayers are subsidizing downtown parking whether they come downtown or not. This is actually an oversimplification that does not serve truth well. First, downtown property owners are contributing to the cost of parking through the MSD tax, as we just said. Fifty thousand dollars every year from MSD tax fund, which a lot of people are not aware of. I might add that that tax was self-imposed by the property owners and merchants downtown many years ago. Second, the majority of the building owners have title to the ground under their building, but not one inch beyond. There are some exceptions, like Husker Warehouse and a number of buildings in the one-hundred block owned by John Tyson. But for most of the building owners, there's no place for parking for themselves, their staffs, or their customers, unless it is provided by the municipality. And this is important for our downtown. Otherwise, a developer would buy two buildings, tear one down, the worst one, and make that parking. And then your downtown streetscape would look like old granny's teeth, which I don't think any of us want. Third, the amenities offered in the downtown's art and entertainment district add quality of life to our whole community, the city and the county, and if promoted properly, can be a powerful recruiting tool and also increase revenues from out-of-town visitors. As we were walking here tonight, we passed Piero's and saw a couple from Fairfax, Virginia, who had come into our store earlier today. Every year, on their way to Florida, they make a point of stopping in downtown Fayetteville, not downtown Durham, and not Fayetteville's mall. They like downtown Fayetteville, and they're spending money having dinner at Piero's. This is what we want. And we do see it already, and we want more. So people have to have access to the amenities that our downtown provides, and these are desirable amenities, even if not fully funded by a user tax. And think of it as the public schools. I think we all would agree that schools are essential in a community, and especially for families who cannot afford a private school. And they deserve public funding, even if they are not used by some taxpayers, like retirees, for example, or people who don't have children. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anna Rouse, and my address is four-five-eight Waterberry Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Ooh, ah. I'm here to address some issues with PWC Solar Farm. And I'm sure you're all familiar with that, okay? As a PWC customer, I'm aware of the increase in the rates that were done the first of this month, as quite sure most of you are, although there's some families that are still trying to pay their bills from January, February, and March. The PWC Solar Energy located at Budner Gardner Generation Plant over on Custer Road, Custer Road, is in its final stages of prep. I don't know why I'm so nervous. First, sustainable energy is good for everyone, and it should be a goal for all the cities, not just Fayetteville. It saves money for the consumers, and that money trickles back into the community. It's better for the environment and reduces pollution, and also, it creates jobs. So basically, it's a win-win for everybody. However, access should be fair to everyone. Right now, the only thing you have to do is sign up, pay a sign-up fee, and then pay your subscription fees, which are done monthly. The subscription fees are going to be offset as a credit. So basically, the goal is no subscription fee, but the credit. The problem is, is that you have low-income families that can't afford the sign-up fee. So, you know, as with the parking situation, which is horrible, I think that the city should allocate some funds to help low-income families, families that have been identified as low-income families, with their sign-up fees. And then it'd be fair, sustainable energy for everybody. And I do mean fair. I'm a retired soldier, and I'm from California, and I remember days going to school and days not going to school because we had smog days back then. So you couldn't go to school because the pollution was horrible. And we've actually gotten to a place in this time where the air is a lot clearer than it was then. Things are more attainable. You know, we have solar energy, wind, and things of that nature. I'm just requesting that the city think about the people that can't afford that sustainable energy, you know? Give them a helping hand, along with parking lot. Thank you.
Hello? Hi. I'm going to put this down a little bit, I'm a little short. Okay. Brittany Campbell, two-twelve Highland Avenue. Hello, I would like to thank everyone for being here tonight. My name is Brittany Campbell. I'm a military spouse, ten-year resident of Fayetteville, and the owner of Sunshine Beauty &amp; Bliss, a beauty studio located on Donaldson Street, which houses ten other businesswomen, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of my studio, my employees, and other service-based businesses such as spas, photographers, wellness centers located in downtown Fayetteville. The baseball stadium was presented as a means to generate additional income to downtown and surrounding small businesses, which was very exciting. However, due to the current parking situation, small businesses, specifically in the service community, are seeing a decrease in sales and customer participation. Currently, Segra Stadium is having a negative impact on other businesses in the area. The Cool Spring service community provides a product that the customer cannot receive from other locations within Fayetteville. We are unique. We are not corporate chains. You cannot find us across the country. We are first-time entrepreneurs, local business owners who have lived in the communities we provide for. We are home of your favorite stylist, your favorite drink, your favorite places to go get a drink, your custom-designed T-shirts, your local photographers, and overall one-of-a-kind experience. Multiple small businesses occupy the currently congested downtown market space because we wanted to make Fayetteville unique and a reason why people would drive the extra few miles away from the areas, minimizing the reason the baseball stadium... Oh, with the recent parking situation, customers are taking their money to other areas, minimizing the reason the baseball stadium was brought to Cool Spring District in the first place to help generate income and revenue in the area. Today, I polled almost fifty clients, and forty-two of them said they would not pay the current fee to come down to parking for a beauty or wellness service. We see roughly thirty clients a day, which equals out to roughly six thousand dollars during a four-to-five-game stretch. My studio is not the only one seeing this. Josh from JCO Salon recently has seen a jig crease as well. He states, "Since the games, we have noticed a twenty-eight percent drop in services on game days, starting as early as three P.M." During that twenty-eight percent drop, I've had to cut staff hours and decided not to expand my service team until after the game season is over. Also, not only is the parking situation a financial instability issue, it's also a factor of our clients' and employees' safety. Tara Thornton from Fusion Salon states, "Single women, the elderly, and young teens are now having to walk a good distance just to get to their appointments or jobs now that the parking has been taken by the, those attending the stadium. With a small police presence downtown after hours, they walk back to their car. This is not only an inconvenience, but a security concern for our customers' employees. I know my time is up, but we need to come to some sort of situation that's more immediate than the long-term solution that is out there right now." Thank you.
Thank you.
Brulinda Corredo? Sorry if I've not pronounced that correctly. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello.
I'm not here to complain, but I'm happy to be here. My name is Brulinda Corredo. I am a pediatric endocrinologist associated with KFIR Valley Hospital, and my address is fifty-two twenty-one Pride Land Hope Mills. First, I want to thank you all for all you do for this wonderful community. On Saturday, November sixteen, KFIR Valley Hospital and Methodist University, we will be hosting our second NC Diabetes Games. The games will be held at the Methodist Camp Grant Grounds, and we are expecting over two hundred families from all different states driving to Fayetteville to compete in the Diabetes Games. Diabetes Games is intended for childrens from ages five up to twenty-one years of age. The game starts promptly at ten a.m. with the grand opening ceremony, and then will close at one P.M. with the presentation of the awards. Once again, as co-chair and the founder of the NC Diabetes Games, I want to invite you all to come and join us. I would like for the mayor and the staff to be at the grand opening ceremony. It's going to be a great time, and I want you to provide and show your... I want to close by saying, the NC Diabetes Games is being promoted at a national level, and I am proud to say that Fayetteville, my city, will be the home of the National Diabetes Game. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Iman Iranami Mohammed.
Honorable. Greetings, everyone. God's peace be upon you. I am Iman Iranami Mohammed, founder of the Fayetteville Muslim Community since 1970, a Vietnam vet, and a friend of my team, the North Carolina Legislative Black Caucus. I will be moving quickly, expeditiously, to cover quite a few things. Do not forget Mr. Burt that was here earlier. He's one of the young men that Iman Iranami Mohammed has worked with and helped train, quite frankly, to be leaders for about fifteen, twenty years. There are other young people who are leaders today in the room. Also, clearly understand, Mother's Day was great and perfect, and the Holy Prophet said that mothers are the cream of creation. They are the cream of the human beings. They are the human beings most important to all of society, to all of the human race. Fathers come next. Mother's Day was extremely important last weekend. Also want to thank President Barack Obama for helping me do many, many things, including helping me to build and start with your assistance and the Legislative Black Caucus, the 295 Business Loop, also the downtown economic redevelopment, which Iran Mohammed helped start 35 years ago, helped also develop the Dogwood Festival. A lot of help went with that. We want to thank God for many things that he's helped me throughout the city and throughout the county, including the baseball stadium as well as the transportation hub. As far as parking, brothers and sisters must use brain power. Put the people on buses in different cities and bring them to Fayetteville, like they do in big cities. Let them park at the new transportation hub that Iran Mohammed and others helped build, like the transportation hub in Durham. There should be fifty to a hundred buses coming to that hub and really help solve the problem with parking. This is the month of, Holy Month of Ramadan. You see me standing here a little bit thinner, skin a little bit shiny and oilier because we're not eating during the daytime. This is a wonderful celebration, and this year particularly, we've been blessed to have Saudi Arabia join with the United States of America to start at the same time. Iran Mohammed tells Saudi Arabia, "You can follow us." We don't necessarily follow Saudi Arabia. So they found a way to agree and work together. So we are now about the seventh day of the thirty days of fasting, and everyone can join in. Fayette State University, my school, clearly is on an upward move. The Legislative Black Caucus has helped Fayette State University develop fifteen apartments across from the football field. Chancellor Willis McLeod, the former chancellor, helped get that done. There are also other apartments, twenty-five new apartments supposed to be built beside those on the lake, all the way up to the Bronco Shopping Center. So Fayette State University students will have lakefront property on the weekends, and everyone in this building here today, you can come to Fayette State University on the weekend and have a meal. You don't have to spend all your money at Golden Corral. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Daniel Farr?
How are you, sir?
Good evening, Mayor Colvin, city council members. Today, I'm here with the thing that's on a lot of people's mind. I'm going to introduce myself first. I'm the owner of Piero's Italian Bistro, and I'm representing the service industry within the downtown. Currently, we have at least 500 employees within the service industry in the downtown area. I represent about fifty myself. I want to start also saying that we are ecstatic to have the baseball stadium here. There's no question about it. With that, with that being said, there's a lot of unique challenges that have came forth, and I've personally witnessed them, along with my customers, my employees. So we're talking about parking, right? We're talking about parking, we're talking about the flow of traffic into downtown, and we're talking about customers being able to patronize their local favorite businesses. We've already been working with the city manager's office, so we've been proactive from the, from the beginning to try to find solutions. We're here to try to be positive and have solutions to the problems, not just complain about things. The biggest thing is the $10 parking. First of all, half the lots that are currently being utilized are not even being filled to half-capacity. I check this out on every particular game day. Weekends slightly busier. If we reduce the amount of paid parking to a smaller epicenter, I believe that will handle a lot of, of those problems. Additionally, for employees, if all of our employees were to pay for the seventy games that are here within a season, all the service industry employees, that would equal $350,000 of parking revenue coming from minimum wage to moderate-wage employees. I think that's very steep. So we're looking for solutions for our employees, for our customers, so that they can continue to patronize us. We've been in business for fifteen years, and we'd like to be in business a lot longer as well. Some initial solutions I thought of, and definitely open to other things we've already been speaking about, are some kind of permitting for staff or a particular area allotted for employees, a shuttle with a little bit of police presence, maybe from the courthouse, which is currently free. Safety is definitely a concern. There's a lot of homeless people and things. Sometimes people get accosted. We need to make sure people feel safe, customers and employees. Our employees work past 11 o'clock on a routine basis. Lastly is Hay Street. Hay Street being closed off by the Fayetteville Police Department has definitely become a challenge. It's not inviting, and we need to make it inviting, and we need to let the flow of traffic come within the downtown. Thank you.
Ms. Willie Smith?
I live at 4934 Philcrest Drive in Fayetteville. I'm representing basically Bonny Doone District between Cedric and Philcrest Drive. I have four major concerns. I have a lot of concerns, but I have four major concerns tonight, and I would like to know who's in charge of or who prioritizes where sidewalks are placed. None of these streets have sidewalks, none. And when it rains, it's a river through all the streets, and I'm seeing parents trying to push strollers down a street that has no, no street. It has no sidewalk. They're trying to go through puddles to get their children from one destination to the other, and basically that's going to catch the city bus. My second thing is the garbage and rubbish that's dumped on our streets between Cedric and Philcrest Drive. It is not the residents who live on those particular streets. This is garbage coming in from outside. We've got couches, mattresses, TVs. We've got, I took, this morning, I took twelve pictures up and down between Cedric and Philcrest Drive. It's just rubbish and garbage, and the children who have to catch the school bus is basically afraid to come out to catch the bus. They're embarrassed more than anything else. And then once they get out there, you know, then they got to deal with being taunted once, on the bus, as far as living in junk, junk piles, basically. And if you go up and down some of those streets, it's, it's ridiculous. I mean, people are living in houses with boards on the walls, on the windows. They got tarps on top of the roofs to keep the rain out. Okay, and if they could get some of these things taken care of, I'm concerned about the children for the recreational part. There is nothing for them to do, nothing. And I've tried several times trying to get some type of recreational materials on that side of Bragg Boulevard, opposed to them trying to cross Bragg Boulevard going to Johnson Street to play on the playground. If we could just get something on, there's plenty of open spaces, plenty of lots. If we could just get something designated for the children to play on that side. I have one granddaughter, but we're all a village when it comes to children, and that's, that's one of my other concerns. And I have another concern as far as with the police presence. We see the police presence, but I would love for the police to get involved more with the children on kind of a personal basis, to let them know that the police are your friends. They are here to help you. You can turn them when they're in a time of crisis, and you don't have to back out and just say, "There, go to popo," you know? So I prefer, you know, if we could get something where it's like, take a child to lunch, like we have, take a cop to lunch or breakfast or whatever, I'd love to get into, involve with that, or get the children involved with something like that. And basically, like I said, I have a lot of concerns, but those are my main ones right there, and I thank you for your time.
Now, we have no further speakers?
Mr. Manager, could someone talk to her about those addresses for those public dump sites? Okay. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank all of you who signed up to speak to us tonight on the public hearing. At this time, we'll move to the consent, item 6.0. I spoke to council during our dinner meeting to ask if we could pull item 6.09 for a separate vote, but I'll look to you for a motion, council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we pull item 6.09 for a separate vote.
All right. And approve the rest of the...
And approve the rest of the agenda as presented.
All right. As a motion by Councilmember Arp, I thought I saw Councilmember Cullerton's light. Any, guess we'll let them transition out.
Just we'll let them transition out.
Yeah. So those who are, those who are leaving, the item concerning parking, the council was about to deal with that. We had moved that up, so if you're here, if that was your interest, you may want to stick around for just a moment for the parking. All right, so we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6.09, which is the resolution for downtown parking, temporary delegation of authority to the city manager. As a second, by Councilmember Cullerton, any further discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilman Wright?
For your votes? Councilman Wright?
This is...
Agreed.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous, so the consent carries. For a separate vote, item 6.09, council, we discussed in detail some solutions for, for the parking situation. We have heard the residents, the downtown area loud and clear. I'm sure each of you have had a separate conversation, and certainly as a, as a, as a body, we're sensitive to any negative impact that we have on any of the citizens, but particularly for an economic driver like we have. And so tonight, the city manager had proposed a couple of options for the city council. One was to delegate authority to him to be able to deal with the parking at his discretion. Council wanted to have a little more of an active role. I felt very strongly about it, that I concur with a lot of the comments that I had tonight about the initial parking fees during special events, and although whatever our, our agreement is, the fees paid for parking is one thing, but also to, to make sure that, that we're not having a negative impact on those that are visiting the downtown areas, another. So I've asked for this to be pulled separately. Council, I'm sure we have a lot to say. We have lights already, starting with Councilmember Chris, then we'll go to Councilman Arp and Dawkins.
Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, we can't legislate what private businesses can charge for their, for parking in their lots, but we can encourage them to come in line with what we're trying to do here. I've said before, and I stand fast on this, I think that we need to immediately cut the parking that we have control over for events to $5 at a maximum. That is even including the parking garage, where during the day, the maximum charge is $4. I would say for a night event, it shouldn't exceed $5, as well as any other parking lots that are controlled by the city. For events, I stand fast that we ought not charge more than $5. The idea is to encourage citizens to come to the ballgames, to come downtown to special events. When you got to spend $10 for parking, and then you take two kids into the ballpark, and you buy them eat your hot dog and something to drink, that's a lot of money on the outlay. I stand firm that we need to cut the cost of the parking that we have control of during events to $5. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman Chris. Councilman Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in agreement on the $5 cap for, for the city's public parking. I think that's a good start point for us, and I would encourage us to, you know, consider reducing it from 10 to 5. I would say that in our discussion, the recommendation that I would make is that we need to come up with a systematic way to mitigate the impact of parking on Hay Street, in Person Street, and along the areas where we have our restaurants and our businesses that are open in the evening hours where the games will impact them. You know, the games typically don't start till 7:00 PM. Most people don't head down until after 5:00 PM, so whether that's with digital parking meters or however we can to, to encourage people not to, I hate to use the word squat for four hours while they're in a ballgame parked on Hay Street in front of a restaurant, you know, they need to go, they need to go park somewhere else for long-term parking. That way, it frees up those spaces for our vendors and businesses downtown for people to rotate through on a limited basis, maybe a two-hour rotation basis where they'd have to move their car. But I do think there's some things that we can do in, in that aspect. I think we also need to look at how we can help solve, you know, the, the availability of employee parking where there's some places, I like the gentleman's suggestion of, you know, maybe we use the courthouse parking lot, and there's some type of, you know, police presence there where people feel comfortable. But I, but I want us to be cautious. We've only, cautious, we've only had fourteen games. We really don't know what it's going to look like. I mean, we've had fourteen games, so a lot of the public is getting used to coming downtown for these types of events, and the whole concept behind having the park-and-walk concept is so people will park, they will walk, they'll stop, they'll shop, they'll dine, they'll do things that they've never done. There are a lot of people in this city that, when you talk to them, have not been to our downtown, and so the idea is, let's bring them downtown, and we're trying to do that to the baseball stadium, so we got to balance that out. So there's going to be some growing pains, and I just ask that we all work together to try to find some amenable solutions, but I think, you know, a $5 cap and maybe providing some options where people can park for their employees at a reasonable compensation, that we do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to make a motion here in a minute. I agree with, with Councilmember Arp and with Councilmember Crisp for that, that $5. That's, that's the initial thing. I think we've got to get going on. I think we've got a game tonight, and I think we've got a game tomorrow. We got a bunch of games this week, and seven or something in a row, I think. So I think we got to move quickly on that. Secondly, it is very important that we do have, we do have, you use the right term, Councilmember Arp, squatters. So what's happening is folks will come in and get the free parking, they'll leave the car the whole time, and then they can't hit those other, they can't buy that doggone book from Diane Parfit, and they can't eat at Antonello's or Piero's, or I can't list all of them, white trash, there's about sixty of them out there. So I don't know how we're going to solve that problem tonight, but I think the one thing we can do is the $5. So I'd like to make a motion with, with council's consideration to go to a $5 for city-owned lots for event parking instead of 10.
All right, I'll circle back to you. I still have a comment here, Councilman Cullerton, but I saw your light, and then Councilmember Waterella after that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a concern of mine, especially being the District Two representative, which encompasses downtown and the impact on those businesses that are still trying to gain a foothold there. This council's intent, of course, was to stimulate economic growth and for us all to take part of it. There's going to be growing pains, but we want to ensure everybody grows after those pains are endured, and I think this council recognizes that right now, we need to adjust the current plan, and so I think we're starting to hear a little bit of consensus on the $5 rate as opposed to $10 during game days. It doesn't stop there, I don't think. Uh, it doesn't stop there, I don't think. I think there's more to be done, and some of this will only come, uh, to clarity, uh, once we've had a few more games, as Mr. Arp has, Councilman Arp has alluded to, uh, there's only been fourteen. We not, we are not sure yet how the impact of what has averaged almost ten thousand or more a week, uh, into our downtown, which you've never seen before, um, that is going to benefit everybody, including the businesses. Uh, but we need to also keep in mind that these businesses have to survive the continued construction process and growth that's occurring right now. And so another thing I think we need to look at before we, uh, possibly make a motion on one aspect is that there still is construction going on, it's affecting downtown and businesses. So with the agenda item in place, uh, to give the authority to city manager to make some of these decisions, I think that, uh, I want to, um, convey the necessity that, uh, we need to pay attention to those construction zones and how that's impacting the current situation, because that will not be ongoing forever. Uh, there's gonna be a resolution of that, and that's gonna change the whole dynamics of the traffic flow, the parking, uh, when that occurs. Also, there are some free lots that we alluded to, there's eight hundred spaces there, but it is a walk, and for some businesses, it's a five to six block walk. And I don't know anybody who is, uh, fully comfortable, although the stats bear out that downtown is safe, but it still is at night, there still are servers and other people carrying cash, and so we need to be mindful of that. And I feel that we should also look at an inter-district transportation, um, for these folks, uh, some type of shuttle or something, I think that we need further discussion on as well. That won't all be done tonight or in this motion, but these are some of the things that we are looking at and that we need to continue to look at and actually take action on. So, uh, I'm gonna leave it at that, and I'll move on for other, uh, comments by council.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. So, um, tonight, it was brought to my attention that even when my daughter came in, I guess there's a game going on this evening?
Yes.
And so, you know, she was explaining to me that for her to come and be a part of this conversation would've cost her ten dollars, had she not looked for free parking. And that's not lost on me, and I wanna make sure that that's very well understood before I make my comment. I recently decided to enter into an agreement at the coworking space, I lease a space there. So I'm, I'm working now downtown also, and I'm taking meetings, and I've had to try to figure out how to do an interview while a game was going on, and how to tell my, my prospective employee to, to be able to meet me. So this conversation is not lost on me at all. Um, but I do want to make a couple of points. The first point that I'd like to make is, first, to say I am in agreement with the five dollars. I think that's an excellent choice. The second point is, I'd like to remind all of the business owners, because if my business chooses to remain downtown, one of the things that I think I will definitely invest in is leasing a space in one of our dedicated parking decks. Now, the reason for that is because for fifty, presently, for fifty dollars a month, I can ensure that any employee that I have has a place to park, no matter what's going on, and it's, it is not, it does not impact them financially. Our objective at the city, from my point of view, should be to ensure that we are creating space for a bustling and vibrant downtown, so that every business that's represented in this audience today, and even those that are not, has an opportunity to do exactly what you got into business to do, which is increase your revenue and your bottom-line profit. As we allow for you to do that through the creation of some of these economic drivers that we create in the city, that gives you the opportunity to invest in things like parking for your, for your employees, and it's our hope that you will take us up on those opportunities. As you know, the, the deck that we're building now on Hay Street, those spaces pre-leased very quickly, and that deck's not even built yet, because the businesses that are coming around it recognize the value of being able to have dedicated parking for your employees. So that's, that's one thing that I wanna make sure that we point out. And then lastly, it is my assertion and belief that parking along Hay Street for, for a period of time, maybe not forever, but for a period of time, should be high turnover parking. It should not be parking, not only on Hay Street, but on all of our peripheral streets. So everywhere you see a city of Fayetteville, two-hour, three-hour, Monday through Friday, that parking should be high turnover. We should never have anybody parked there for four hours during an event, because that impedes the ability for the businesses there to be able to serve the patrons who are not necessarily visiting those ballgames. So it's my hope that as we direct the city manager this evening, we will be sure to direct him, give him guidance, so that he can create solutions that allow for that turnover, that, that parking to be quickly turned over. I'd like to take just a moment and thank each one of you for coming out and sharing in the emails that you've sent. Again, they were not lost on us. And, and I personally would like to ask you, as some of my other councilmembers have, bear with us, these are growing pains, but it is for the betterment of our city, and we are really looking to make this a city that people across this state and this nation would hope to visit, and thereby increasing the bottom line for the revenue for the businesses in our downtown and surrounding area.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Wright, did you have a comment?
Uh, yes. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I echo those, uh, responses of my, um, council members. And I hate to delay, uh, in this phone, but, but I wanted to talk to you, um, about the concern for an increased police presence in the downtown area. Uh, that police, um, presence would cause the residents to feel safer as well. I've heard the remarks of a lot of our residents tonight, and, uh, I really feel strongly about that in, increased police presence to feel, for our residents to feel safer as well. And, uh, of course, these are growing pains. I agree with the decrease from ten to five dollars, uh, in parking for, uh, city-owned property. And hopefully, uh, those privately-owned businesses will fall in line as we continue to try to come up with different methods as to solve the problem. We understand that, uh, small business is the backbone of any city. Our whole objective in building the downtown ballpark was economic in the beginning, economic impact, and I think by the decrease in five dollars overall, when we talk about long-term investments, will pay off in big dividends. And so that five dollar, uh, decrease, uh, I'm happy about that, but I would, uh, like the city manager to, uh, get with the police chief and see what it's gonna take to, uh, increase the police presence in the downtown area during ballpark games. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wright. And so, uh, with that, I had, uh, asked council to consider, uh, fee reduction. I mean, at the end of the day, you've heard it pretty consistently, that our goal is not to impact you negatively, but to make sure that the citizens have the disposable income, uh, to patronize your businesses. Uh, but we do ask that you bear with us. This is a work in progress, uh, and we were conscious to the fact that we only had one time to make a first impression, so like Councilmember Arp said, a lot of people have not made it to a Woodpecker's game, and we wanna make sure that they are able to do that. But with that, I think we have a motion by Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Cullerton, I'll go to you for a motion.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and, uh, slightly revise the motion. Uh, I will make a motion to, uh, on six, item six point zero nine, the resolution of downtown parking, temporary delegation of authority to the city manager. I would move that we do that with the exception that we instill a reduction in game day rate parking for all city lots and spaces to five dollars, and to have council, uh, revisit this delegation of authority once major construction is complete, um, the parking deck and associated structures.
All right. Uh, Councilman Cullerton, just for clarification, uh, and to the second, this is for special event parking, which?
Special event parking. I'm sorry, yes, uh, let me clarify that, uh, that we move for, uh, special event parking, not just game day, to five dollars of all city lots and spaces.
So we got a motion by Councilmember Cullerton, and a second by Councilmember Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Oh, oh, okay, okay. All right. Uh, Councilmember?
Councilmember Cullerton, I'd just like to ask if there's any consideration that is given to the concerns that have been expressed in terms of the, the merchants along the, the shoppable areas in that motion whereby we can direct staff to include maybe some of the things that have been heard this evening in, in creating their solutions for parking while we, while we work all this out?
I, I think that, um, I, I would encourage that city manager, of course, had listened to all the, uh, concerns expressed and all the concerns of council in his, uh, delegation of authority, that he will take that into account, but specifics in this motion, I don't know that we can address tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Crisp?
Yes, sir. I think that the impetus is within the resolution, giving the city manager the authority to work this problem. Uh, I like what Mrs. Councilmember Waddell said about the major streets in the downtown area, where we have the two-hour parking signs. I think that the city manager can do something about that, staying free parking for certain hours. He can work all of that out. The basic motion as it is, gives him the authority to do these kinds of things, as she pointed out. So I just wanted to say, we don't need to try to amend the motion. Let's get it on.
All right. So, city manager, you're clear? Uh, well, we'll see if the motion carries. So, uh, have a motion, any further discussion? Is that, Councilmember Wright, is that a discussion, or is, are you voting?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. That's, uh, that's a discussion. I wanted also, um, for the city manager, uh, whoever, we decide to, um, look at this as far as if it's a delegation from the council or whatever, but also those employees that work, uh, during the day, uh, to take a greater look at how we can solve that problem, maybe with, uh, some type of, um, pass or some type of identification, uh, on a regular basis. So, you know, you have different park attendants that change, that don't know the employees, so there'll be a hard way to get back and forth to their place of business. So with some type of identification, I don't know how we can do that, but we need to look at that as well.
So I think, thank you.
All is in the resolution.
So, uh, I, I think Councilmember Wright, as a part of, as a part of the resolution that, uh, is on the floor to pass, we have some specifics that the city manager will, will come back to council with, uh, with more details about the on-street availability parking that was mentioned, uh, without what and how to handle, uh, city employees and, and those others, uh, who are kinda caught in between that. So, Mr. Manager, are you clear on that guidance? All right. So, uh, council, if there's no further discussion, I'll ask for your votes at this time. Councilman Wright?
Agree.
All right. Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Unanimous? Five dollars. Five-dollar parking in Fayetteville.[1350.04][1350.04](APPLAUSE). Thank you. And, uh, we'll give a, we'll give a few-minute break, uh, maybe a ten-minute break, to allow you all to dismiss.
City managers as well as the transitsters to look beyond their uh skillset and look for a more strategic marketing uh program so that we can get the citizens more aware of what's out there for them and how to use the system. Um, uh, technical improvement, uh, we had a meeting uh last week about just integrating what's currently available uh that the system has and try to integrate that into a more seamlessly and user-friendly system uh that would allow, once again, our citizens to uh utilize it in a more of a app-related uh system that will support the transit system solely. Uh, other uh future plans uh we are looking to tackle is improve customer experience, uh dependability, express routes, and security. Uh, just the feedback that we've gotten from not only our uh our citizens that do attend our meeting, these are key factors that they would like to see. The, they wanna know if they can get to work on time, if the bus is going to be there on time, uh express routes, if they don't wanna take an hour to get to a destination where uh they can either ride share and experience that. So, all of these things we are looking to make improvements on. On the security ar- area, it's more of a mindset and we hope to change that mindset with different initiatives that would allow citizens to partake in the bus systems to see that it's not uh this evil uh trip. It's a very pleasant experience, they just need to go out and experience it. Uh, other things is service to Fort Bragg. A survey of uh desired destination is underway at Fort Bragg. Communications with Mr. Humes and the Garrison leadership uh are in process as we speak to make sure that uh we have that need and that need will be supported. Uh, another initiative is our new buses. We, our buses are aging and there are opportunities to implement new buses. Uh, buses we are looking at are electric, which will improve emissions, low noise, and lower operating costs. Uh, other than that, uh, that is our presentation from the committee. Uh, open the floor for any questions.
Uh, yes, sir, we do have a couple of questions. I have Councilmember Hare and then Wright.
Mr. Worrell. Good evening, sir. Uh, thank you for um pretty good report and I love to see the, the future look that we have planning, especially the electric buses. I would appreciate seeing that and, and the effects that it will give our community. I wanna speak to you about uh our benches and shelters as I started to get into upstairs. Um, let's start at the uh Merkson Road and WT Brown. I was somewhat puzzled where that location would be. I mean, I know the, I know the intersection, but I know that we have the shelter and um bench there at Bronco Square. Where is the other one? Because right up at the light at Langdon, we already have a shelter. Uh, so wh- 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 where's the other stop in between there?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, Randy Hume, your Transit Director.
Yes, sir.
Uh, tha- that stop is across the street, really, from the Bronco Square one. It is just north of WT Brown. We've met with uh, uh Fayetteville State and i- it's right, right in front of the entrance of that building that's just, just north of WT Brown. I don't, I don't know the exact name of it, but it is one that has, that meets our criteria. Uh, we also have one blue shelter that we bought for Fayetteville State that we were gonna put on Langdon that we did not install, so we are actually, w- one of the reasons for putting it there is so it would be a Fayetteville State uh shelter.
Wh- where is the location? And I'm, you know, I'm all, I'm all for shelters. I wish we could get a, a bench, I've said this many, many times before, a bench and a shelter at every stop. I, I really do. Uh, even, well, before I go to the next one, tell me the criteria that you have for benches and shelters.
Our, our, our criteria, which, which the council has adopted, is that uh we have ten, ten riders per day, uh, on an average, ten riders per day uh for a bench and twenty riders per day for a shelter. And that, those numbers we, we track and those, that's what leads us to uh, to placing a bench or a shelter. And again, we, we usually do that as we approach those numbers. So, a- as we're monitoring and the stops get to uh seven, eight, or nine, then we start looking at potential of putting a bench there and when it gets higher than that, then we start looking for shelter.
Yes, sir. A- as, as we look out at the Bonanza and, and Westover Recreation Area and I see we on- only have listed there for a bench, and if, if it's met by the criteria that you're saying, you're saying that we don't meet that criteria for a, a shelter also, but I'm, I'm very much gonna stress and I hope I can get some support around the diocese tonight. Um, uh, just being, you know, the kind of support, you know, the, the, the rec center, the schools and folk going back and forth, um, I, I would greatly appreciate us reconsider uh and, and, and putting a shelter with that particular bench out there. Uh, the other one, I just wanted to know about the location there at Filter Plant and Ames Street. I was trying to figure where that would be.
A- as you come in toward Fayetteville State, it would be past Ames, so it's, it's, it's on the uh area right there. I think there's a, there's a bridge there and be immediately after the bridge.
Oh, you mean there, at the, at the, the bus stop now?
No, no, it, it's actually between the two bus, we'll put it between the two bus stops we have there now. So, it'd be one just past Ames as you come in and then uh i- it'd be right there by the PWC uh, uh yard.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Buses and shelters everywhere. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, all right. Thanks, sir. Councilman, uh Wright?
Uh, yes, sir, thank you. And thank you for the presentation. Uh, I'll go back to the screen where it talked about uh the number of, uh, I think, the number of stops that were placed and the number of pads. Uh, can we go back to that screen? Uh, concrete contractors?
Trying to figure it to go. Go back here. Is it number three? Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah. It talked about um twenty, twenty-one percent of buses, uh, of bus stops have a, a bench and/or a shelter. So, only twenty-one percent of the entire city's bus stops have a bu- have a bus stop or shelter. I, I don't understand that, so you might be able to break that down to me because that's a very low number when you talk about city over wide or what are you, uh, I need to know the areas where you're concentrating the bus stop and how you come up with that number. I think that's pretty low. And then the other thing that upset me was the apps. The, I'm sorry, can you go back to that screen? Uh, underneath that, the second uh bullet, the absence of a co- uh concrete contractor is pre- uh, is preventing additional pads and sidewalks. Uh, that statement disturbs me because how is it that, you know, a concrete contractor is absent when you have so many contractors that do concrete out there? Tell me why that uh we have an absence of a concrete contractor that's preventing pads and sidewalks from being laid. I, I don't understand that.
Y- yes, sir. Um, our, our, our issue is we had a contract, you know, a contract with a local uh concrete, concrete installer. Uh, that con- that contract had uh the ability to renew that and we thought the contractor was going to renew it. Uh, he chose not to because costs were going up. Uh, we have bid that at least twice uh since he uh, since he backed out of it and both times we got a high bid and a very low bid. And working with their engineering department, the low bid, they did not feel could accomplish the work like it was supposed to be done or did not consider all the uh implications that were required with that. And so, we ended up rejecting those, so we're trying to get it out again. We, we, we actually have s- have some stops that we can install and we continue to do that after the, you know, after the contract. The contractor went ahead and did the ones we had given him before.
Yeah.
But now we have no contract, we've bid it twice, we're going out again, uh, and hopefully we can get that done very quickly. And thi- this is an on-call, uh, it's an on-call contracts that we have unit prices that we put out there. It has all of our federal grant language in it and so it allows us to actually, once we have that contract in place, to do things more quickly.
Okay, yeah, so um to me, that's not a satisfactory statement because of the, I think, the urgency when you have mothers, senior citizens, and children at bus stops when it's raining and adverse weather. And I don't know how long you've been dealing with trying to get a concrete contractor, but the longer you deal with that, uh, the longer we have our residents out in the weather. So, I, I would just hope that that is a priority for you, uh, and also the percentage of twenty-one percent across the city, I think, you know, we need to work on building, making that percentage a little, um, a little larger across the city and make, make, make uh bus stops and pads and covers, I think, a priority in our city. And I think it, it, it really beautifies the city, tells a lot of people how concerned we are about our residents when people come in and go out of the city, and I think that that should be one priority. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Uh... Did we lose Councilmember Wright? Okay. Um, Councilman Chris, and before we go to, uh, Councilman Chris, I just wanted to point out, uh, for the listening audience, um, this, this uh graph, which basically showed that Fayetteville was like the third highest uh in, in the state, I guess is what this is, and the only two ahead of us are Raleigh and Chapel Hill, which are, you know, pretty, pretty good uh comparisons. Uh, and that was for a number of uh shelters and uh with available stops. Now, of course, maybe you can give us some context of that twenty percent number uh at some point, but uh we have a couple more questions, I just wanted to make sure that...
Well, Mr. Mayor, it's never as easy as it appears. First of all, putting a pad for a bench or a shelter is small time for concrete contractors. They're going after big fish right now. Even the large projects are having problems hiring concrete contractors because they have an awful lot of work to do and the cost of concrete is way up there. So, trying to find somebody to put a bench, pad out there for a couple thousand dollars, that's one of the problems that uh Mr. Humes is facing. The other thing is cost. Let us not forget now, Mr. Hume, come back up, 'cause I want you to explain something carefully. It's one thing for us to say we wanna bench or shelter at every bus stop. You got three people getting on the bus at this one stop. What's the cost of a bench?
A, a bench, I, I believe is somewhere around seven, eight hundred dollars.
What's the cost of a shelter?
Uh, shelter is, the, the whole package with a bench, shelter, solar light kit, and trash can is uh just over seven thousand dollars.
How much?
Seven thousand.
There you go. So, in some instances, it's cost prohibitive. If you've got two or three people, that's why we have the matrix of ten people, ten riders at a location in order to put a, a bench there, and then twenty riders and we put a shelter. Now, there's another factor that needs to be remembered. Most of these routes are on North Carolina DOT thoroughfares and we have to get their permission because of right-ofways, gas lines, cable lines, all kinds of things, telephone. So, it's never as simple as just saying, okay, let's put one there. And the cost has to be dictated by the number of riders at these places. We need to understand that. Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilman Cullerton.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of what I was gonna uh speak to, you've already mentioned, as well as Councilman Chris, uh, I just wanted to point out on the uh stats that we were shown that, you know, out of fourteen cities uh that you listed here, which include Raleigh, Charlotte, Columbia, South Carolina, Greenville, South Carolina, Chapel Hill, Cary, we're fourth with the number of stops and uh benches and shelters, fourth out of all those. I think that's doing pretty good. I think we could do better, I think we should strive to do better, but we're doing pretty good there. We, we're, we're second in shelters, percentage of shelters in our city, ranked against all those other pure cities. We're second in the shelters. I think we're doing pretty good there as well. That does not to say the person standing in the rain, that makes a bit of difference to them, so we should continue to strive, but I think it's uh, uh, something that uh if we of a council want to put that money into that, we need to uh give the budget to you folks, but um I think we're doing a pretty good job. Um, we should always look to do better. Um, I mean, I just wanted to clarify those points that were already made. Second in the number of shelters, fourth in the number of shelters and benches for our stops. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, and, and then before I go to Councilmember Hare, I did have a, a couple of things that we need to say. One, um, transit is not a, a self-sustaining fund, so we, we contribute to it so that we have a service for our people, so it can't totally be cost-driven um more so than taking care of, of people who, who need to utilize the service. My concern is, how are you, uh, I sent out a picture this weekend and, and echoed the concern of uh some other councilmembers, how are you addressing um keeping these, the shelters that we do have, uh, s- maintained, clean, inviting? I see shopping carts all the time at 'em, uh, I see, see trash out. Uh, how do you make that? What, what is your process for dealing with that, number one? Two, uh, maybe as a council, I'm hopeful that we make a look at some policy direction and uh fiscal contribution to transit to uh, to deal with these extra shopping carts and those other things of maintaining what we have. How do you deal with that currently?
Let, let me say, the, the, the actual maintenance, the, the regular maintenance of our bus shelters and bench locations is done by Parks, Recreation, and Maintenance, and we, you know, transit pays them to, to do that because they're already out in the field. Uh, you know, we have gone through that a couple times where we have, we've actually asked for staffing to be able to uh, to do that ourselves, but uh right now, that, that is the way we do it. Uh, we actually talked to the city manager this year in budget preparation about potentially contracting that out to a private contractor, uh, but we, we, we do rely on Parks and Rec, uh, Parks and Rec. Uh, we also, uh, when there is an urgent need, we, we, we send our own staff out, but we really don't, we don't have the staff to go out and do that on a regular, ongoing basis right, right now. And so, that is the way we do that. Now, the, the, the shopping carts is a whole, whole new issue. I know it came up uh last year as we were talking about fairs and we've done quite a bit of research, uh, and it's, it's a problem, uh, i- it's a problem all over, you know, it's not just of, unique to Fayetteville. And uh we, we've looked at some of the things some others have done, probably the most uh, uh aggressive system has been uh done in Savannah, Georgia. Uh, it's only been out there for less than a year in terms of what they're doing, so I don't know how effective it's been, but they actually uh have required groceries, larger grocery store chains to uh either provide uh a, a plan as to how they are going to pick up their carts, because they're, they're not our carts, they're their carts, how they're gonna pick those up, and if not, then they, they actually have a plan where they uh assess them for the city picking them up. And so, that is one choice. Uh, you know, California, the United Grocers out there have a contract, ha- have gone together with contract, and so they have several grocers together and they collect them and they assess the grocery stores for the ones that they uh, uh, that, that they, that they pick up. Uh, tho- those are just a few of the, the, the ones that I've been able to, to look at.
That would make for a great business opportunity here, 'cause I see...
Yes, sir.
Plenty of. All right, so I have uh Councilmember Arp and then uh Councilmember Hare for round two, and then we'll, we'll need to move on, you all. Acceptable.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, how do we know when a bus shelter needs to be cleaned?
Well, what, they, they have a schedule, they go by, you know, Parks and Rec's out there every day, so they go by them and there's, there's, if they see something, they're...
That's when they're not doing construction work, they're, they're going by.
Pardon me?
N- never mind. Um, so, so he- he- here's the situation, there's gotta be a routine inspection, there's gotta be a systematic, it can't just be, we drive by and notice. There, there's gotta be some kind of routine, 'cause here's the problem, I, I watched a woman who lived on a, on a sh- bus shelter for almost a year. She lived there, shopping cart full of all her belongings on Sycamore Dairy for almost a year, and I used to stop and speak to her. Um, and, and it, and that's not the purpose of our bus shelters, okay? And so, i- if it's a policy, i- if it's a policy that you need from this body, then we need to come up with a policy directive uh for, for what we need to do to keep them safe, clean, and available for uh the, the public to use for transportation. But I can tell you, that's a problem, when, you know, when people are walking up to a bus shelter and people are camped out, you know, it looks like a, you know, it looks like a campground, they, they're not gonna use that bus shelter. Uh, and, and so, I'm all for it, I think it's great that we're, we're one of the leaders in the state that we got them. I think it's a key component of having a great uh bus system, but you gotta take care of what you got. So, Randy, I hear, I hear what you guys are saying, you're not staffed for that, so Mr. Manager, we, we've gotta have a plan, and maybe it's Parks and Rec not doing construction and Parks and Rec going by and systematically cleaning up our uh, our bus stops. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Manager, you have something to say about that before we...
Yes, sir. Um, uh, what Randy um, um, was getting ready to, to share was that all of his drivers who go by any stops in the city, um, they are, also have radios and can report that back, and Parks and Recreation will respond when called by um transit. If that system isn't working, then that's something internal that we'll fix tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hare?
Mayor, I was gonna, I, I'm gonna pull my, my uh question back, it was, it's already been asked and answered.
Okay. Uh, before I go to Councilman Chris and then we received a report, are there any shelters that are uninstalled that are scheduled for installation that we have sitting in a warehouse somewhere?
We, we, we have a, uh, we have a handout with the clerk, if you would like it, of the ones that we're working on, that once we have a new contractor, we'll be expeditiously working on those, uh, both, it should list both the bench and shelters, so we can get that, we can get that to you. Uh, we have right now, uh, we have ten, we have ten shelters, I, I don't know exactly how many benches, but we have ten shelters that we do have now in stock at our, at our facility, that doesn't include any at the old, old Transit Center.
All right, thank you. Councilman Chris, and then we'll have to wrap this up.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think the system of asking the driver of the bus, the driver of the bus is concerned about traffic, he's concerned about getting people on and off the bus safely. I just don't think his, he's concentrating on the appearance of the bus bench or the bus shelter. I, you know, any system has to have inspections. Somebody's gotta go by and look at these things, other than the mayor, taking pictures.
Take a whole lot of them.
Okay, but uh, I'm, I guess I'm speaking to the city manager now. That system ain't working of where we're relying on the bus drivers to tell us how dirty or trash or all of that stuff at these shelters. Gotta find another way, and we can't palm it off on Parks and Rec. They're reactionary, you just told me that. Okay, well, they're reacting once they get the notice from transit, so that makes them reactionary. They're not out there inspecting to see what's uh wrong with these shelters, that's a responsibility that belongs to Mr. Hume. That's a transit responsibility, that you're, just like your fair son over there is spotless, because you are looking at it every day. Somebody's gotta be looking at these bus shelters.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Arp?
Yeah, i- you know, i- if I could suggest, we, we tell our citizens all the time, if you see something, report it, use four-three-three-one-FAY, if you see it, use FAY-FIX-it. And, and I would say that we need to be applying that across our whole city staff. It could be a police officer that sees it, it could be a code inspector who's out doing code enforcement, it could be anybody on the city staff, but the, the, the reality is, Mr. Crisp, you're right, if we're not out policing ourselves, then, then it's not, and when I say policing, I mean in terms of cleaning up after ourselves, like in the military, then, you know, it's not gonna happen, but we, we need to encourage all our employees to do it, and we do need to encourage the public to do it. Our patrons who are riding the buses, when they come up, there ought to be a sign on that bus stop that says, if this bus stop is not clean, you know, call four-three-three-one-FAY, use the FAY-FIX-it app. Um, but there's, there's a lot of ways we can do this, but w- we need to get it done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Worrell?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Um, I'm, I'll be brief, I, I just wanna echo what Councilmember Arp just said, and I think even as the bus drivers are riding by, if they see something in disrepair at a bus stop, there should be a way that they can, you know, document that and then turn it in at the end of their shift, so it shouldn't be a, a difficult fix.
Thank you, ma'am, and I think we've covered it. So, so, uh, I think, if I may... Oh, yes, sir.
Uh, just to wrap up on the discussion on the shelters and the benches, uh, to everyone's point on council, you are correct. Uh, and the ci- uh, the committee has uh stressed their concerns to Mr. Hune to make it their responsibility because it affects them directly in terms of increasing ridership, increasing the appearance of their system, and they are very aware of that and uh have taken steps to try to make improvements, but I do agree with the council that, from a policy standpoint, that responsibility should lie in our transit umbrella.
Thank you, sir. All right, council with that, uh, need a motion to receive, sir?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's where I was getting at. So, uh, Mayor Protim, is that you?
Uh, yes, sir. So, council, the motion is to receive the report.
A second. All right, there's a motion by Mayor Protim Moan, second by uh Mr., was it, Arp Cullerton? I saw, I saw the light, we're Arp, voice of Cullerton, so... All right, uh, Councilmember Cullerton, so uh, any discussion on the motion that has been discussed thoroughly? All right, I, I'll, I'll look to you for your votes again, please, if you can. Councilman Wright? All right. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Thank you for what you all do.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Uh, item seven-point-zero-two, uh, council was a um item that we've added, we discussed at dinner. Uh, as we all know, it's budget time in Raleigh, we are asking for everything that we can possibly ask our legislators in Raleigh to uh, to provide to this community with a list of long needs, so Dr. Telly Whitfield, you have something for us, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, in January, you may remember that the council approved our two thousand nineteen legislative advocacy agenda to include several points. Um, the legislative priorities included legislative support for strengthening our local public safety agencies, the ability to maintain a safe and secure community, also included our legislative support for local multimodal transit um network, as well as our legislative support for long-term financial support, and legislative support for our Tex-5 Brown Fields Project. Staff tonight is request, uh, requesting, um, per the request from our state delegation to introduce a resolution for council's consideration, requesting additional assistance for the following items. The city of Fayetteville is requesting funding to support the del- development of a stormwater resiliency master plan to study the impacts of stormwater on properties citywide. The estimated cost for that plan is a million dollars. The city of Fayetteville is also um with several partners, working to make efforts to develop our Tier One study and action plan to delineate how the city and its partners can best position the community to take advantage of the incentives provided for being a Tier One community from the North Carolina Department of Commerce. The estimated cost for that particular plan is five hundred thousand dollars. The city is also um seeking support for an environmental improvement plan to study areas in and around the uh Cape Fear River. This study would seek to best, uh, for best solutions available to lessen the negative impacts on our citizens during our storm events. The estimated cost for that plan is five hundred thousand dollars. In addition, the city of Fayetteville is seeking support to develop smart city capacity through pursuing the installation of broadband access throughout the city uh to connect, um, for a connection study and for implementation plan. The estimated cost for that particular plan is five hundred thousand dollars. Those are the re- uh additional requests we have in a resolution, uh, resolution that is in front of you.
All right, uh, council, thank you, sir. Councilman Hare?
Yeah, I was gonna make a motion.
Oh, okay. I think we made, was that a, okay, all right, y'all, y'all are voting, all right. So, we have a, have a Hare-Worrell motion, uh, if there are no other, uh, and so, motion to uh accept, approve the resolution so that we can get this up to our delegation. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilman Wright? All right. Madam Clerk, that is uh unanimous? All right. All right. Item nine-point, uh, nine-point-zero-one, approval of the issuance of uh limited obligation bonds, baseball stadium, parking deck, and new pool. Mr. Tola? Baseball stadium, parking deck, and new pool. Mr. Toler?
Mayor, council, before you tonight, you have the final resolution to issue Series 2019 Limited Obligation Bonds. A quick overview, not to exceed amount, 7.3 million. Basically looking at the lake rim pool, plus minus $3 million. Baseball budget increase, 2.5 million dollars is approved on December 10th. And then the parking deck budget increase of 1.5 million to total $7 million. And then you'll have issuance costs that bring the not to exceed to 7.3 million. And then you can see the revenue sources there, pool and stadium to come out of CIP, parking garage to be padded out of additional increased tax revenue. Some other factors to consider, when you look at limited obligation bonds versus installment financing, the limited obligation bonds were more cost-effective and a more viable option. There will be no impact on the city's debt rating, which was reaffirmed in spring of this year to be double A for LOBS. And then the LGC approved at their meeting on May the 7th. So before you have the resolution, I would need to read it aloud, but then I would ask if there's any questions or comments.
You said you didn't need to read it aloud, or no?
Yeah, I can't, I was gonna take questions initially, and then I can read it.
You go ahead and read.
Okay. Alright, resolution approving and authorizing the sale and issuance of limited obligation bonds and the execution and delivery of a second supplemental trust agreement and related documents in connection with acquisition, construction, and equipping of additional baseball stadium and parking deck improvements and a new pool at the city's lake rim recreation center.
Thank you, sir. Stoller, I don't really have a question. I guess this is a question more so for council. We've discussed and rehashed this, so. I do support a lot of the things that are included in here, but it's just some policy decisions on how and where. So council, I'll leave it at you. Alright. Councilman Chris?
Did we clarify taking the parking deck cost out, that 1.5?
We kinda had discussion about it, but that's.
I thought we said we were gonna go, I thought we said upstairs, I thought it was a consensus that we take that out and pay that. There was not a consensus to that?
Well, I don't know if we got there, but Madam Attorney?
Mayor, I think what Councilmember Crisp is alluding to would be to be a part of the motion that is put on the floor for an up or down vote.
Okay, understood. Alright, so I guess Councilmember Crisp, before you relinquish the floor, I guess we can propose to do it without it. I certainly have my reservations about borrowing what we don't need to borrow, but.
Mr. Mayor, I thought there was a consensus enough that we wanted to break out that one issue. And pay for that now and move on.
Sounds like a motion.
With approval of the motion to adopt the resolution approving and authorizing the sale and issuance of limited obligation bond and the execution and delivery of a second supplemental trust agreement and related documents, with the exception of the 1.5 million to pay for the parking deck from general funds. That's my motion?
I'll second it. Sounds like it. So we got three seconds, alright. We have a motion by Councilmember Crisp. We have multiple seconds. I'll have to give that to somebody, so we'll say, Councilmember Hare? Any discussion on the motion? Alright, oh, okay. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes.
Ms. Waddell, was that a vote or discussion? Okay.
Right, I appreciate the motion. In our discussion last Thursday and also tonight, we have a budget meeting this Thursday at 5:00 where if we choose, we might go back in a closed session for whatever reason we want to, based as long as it's legal, based on the attorney's guidance. I favor leaving the 1.5 in right now because we've only had one budget meeting. We just eliminated over $900,000 in reoccurring revenues out of the solid waste fund that was decided last Thursday. So that means other budget adjustments have to now be made off that $900,000. I mean, we do have the 1.5 available in the unassigned slash undesigned fund balance. But as we go through our next budget session Tuesday, there might be areas that people want to add to the budget that would take away from the available fund balance. We can bond this money. Some of the other things that council members had mentioned about adding to the budget are not bondable. So we might have to take that out of the fund balance. I just think we need to just have one last discussion this Thursday. We were told that the documents have to be prepared by the 23rd, I believe, of this month. So we can meet Thursday, make a final decision on the 1.5 to either leave the 1.5 in or take it out of fund balance Thursday night. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, I withdraw my motion. I think that it was premature in that we, the Mayor Pro Tim makes a very valid point. And we've gotta look at the whole picture in reference to what we're doing here tonight. So I would withdraw that motion, or if you would accept an amendment, and the amendment would be to leave the 1.5 in this resolution approving and authorizing the sale and issue of limited obligation bonds and the execution and delivery of a second supplemental trust agreement and related document.
Okay.
As it is written.
Alright, so we are in the discussion phase, so you have amended your motion. Procedurally, Madam Attorney, can we, how do we proceed with this? Do I need to get his second to agree to the amendment and then continue discussion?
Yes, you need a second on the amendment.
So who had originally, do you, because that's entirely different. Okay, alright.
Can we clarify?
Yeah, so I heard two things. I heard him say he withdrew it, and I heard him say amended it.
Well, I said if you would accept an amendment to the motion.
Alright, well, so you have a new second, I suppose, on the amended motion, which is kinda like a new motion. So new second is Councilmember Waddell, and that is to accept this as presented.
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright. So discussion on that motion, I do have several. Had Councilmember Waddell, Dawkins, Cullerton, Colvin, and Hare.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I agree with what Mayor Pro Tim Moan said. We are still relatively early in the budgeting stages. And we've already closed the door on two very important aspects of our potential budget. And if we close the door on this, it limits what we might be able to do with what we have to work with. And so I think that keeping our options open is very, very wise at this point. It does not mean that we necessarily have to utilize that money in that fashion. But it means if we do, it's there for us to be able to do so without having to jump through hoops to make that happen. So I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Moan, and I'm happy to second that motion.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I cannot support this motion. My understanding and different discussions we've had was, you know, this was 1.5 million was not going to be right away. And I definitely cannot support this on the parking deck. Number one, I want to see, I wanna see what the real cost is, even if we have to audit and review the actual documents of all these expenses. That's number one. Number two, there is no incentive to save any money if we pass this. We have to borrow this money if this motion passes, 1.5 million along with this other stuff. The pool, you know, you know how I feel about pools, but I would still support the pool and whatever the other issue is, the stadium. We have to do that. The parking deck is something totally different. And I cannot support borrowing 1.5 million for this parking deck without some type of audit. Because once this money's borrowed, we cannot pay it back within 10 years. We have to borrow the money and pay interest on the money for 10 years. Therefore, the, if we, as Mayor Pro Tim Moan said about the $900,000, we pull that out of the fund balance and we pull this 1.5 million out of the fund balance, we're still going to have $800,000 above our 12% goal. And it would still be 4.2 million above our 10% goal. So I am most definitely against this. I want the 1.5 million pulled out. And I'll be happy to discuss how we might can work with our project manager on this parking deck, but not in this situation where we have to borrow the money and then we have to pay interest for 10 years, even if we really don't need the money on this project. And plus, I'm not gonna be here on Thursday, so I want the matter settled tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilman Cullerton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try not to echo what's already been said and what was said upstairs prior to this. But for some clarification for the public and perhaps everybody listening, one, the issue that we're discussing of the 1.5 right now does not mean that this council has decided to support funding the additional money for the parking deck. This doesn't mean that we've made that decision. What we're making a decision on tonight is an option, should we choose to fund all of it, none of it, or part of it. An option to do that. I think it would be premature of this council to limit our options in a way that we can't reverse. Approving this item tonight as written will allow us the opportunity to discuss further at Thursday's budget meeting, in which we can review other options which have not been identified, only alluded to. So why would we limit an option that we may find to be the most prudent if we choose to fund this parking deck project? So I would support the motion by Councilman Crisp and seconded by Councilwoman Waddell that we do approve this tonight so that we may have the opportunity to discuss it Thursday to determine if this is the best course of action or not. We may find that we don't have monies that are available in the right areas in order to use this, should we choose to fund this. Or we may find this is the best option, or it's not. But we can always do that Thursday. It doesn't have to be done tonight. And I just think further discussion is warranted. And that is why I would support this tonight. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Well, my perspective is clear. The next presentation that you'll get at home is to set the public hearing for the budget. And this is the proposed budget that the manager is proposing to council. And if we adopted it as presented, the council's 10% reserve policy, okay? So the state's minimum is 8%. The council's 10% reserve policy. Everything in excess of that is 6.6 million dollars. The council has a goal of a 12% reserve policy, and that amount is 3.2 million. That's if we accept everything that is being presented tonight. And so I think it is fiscally irresponsible to borrow money or to get a cash advance on our credit card to potentially loan out or invest in a project. So we're gonna be paying interest, or the taxpayers will pay interest on the money that you're looking to loan someone out that you're not receiving any interest for. Okay, and so I think that as it relates to all these other budgetary questions, that is where you make tough decisions and you stick within it. I mean, you'll always find things that need to be done, but the budget time is about finding things that are important and prioritizing. And so the more we keep borrowing, and I'm certain this question is for Mr. Toler. If you go under the concept that my colleague said that you can always pull it off on Thursday, why you can't add it on Thursday? How can you have it both ways?
You can only have it, you can always go down, you can never go up. So if you were to adopt the motion tonight and take out the language for the parking deck, then that's done. It's just the way that the statute set out.
Right.
You can always go down, but never back up.
Okay, and so now let's look at this for a second. Originally, when we talked about this, the first discussion a couple of weeks ago was to authorize us the ability to do this process. And since then, the Local Government Commission has approved our ability to borrow this and said, sure Fayetteville, you can borrow this if you like. And now you're asking us to make a decision about borrowing, when as Councilmember Dawkins said, if we get past Thursday, Mr. Toler, and the 1.5 stays in, but we find out our actual costs are 900,000, what happens?
That's.
We've just borrowed money we don't need.
I mean, honestly, it was.
And interest for 10 years. Is that responsible? Alright, so Councilman Arp?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And you said much of what I wanted to say. Listen, I'm all about options, you know, you gotta put all the options on the table, but I don't think this is a valid option. Because if we elect not to do it, once we've committed, we've committed to borrowing money and we've committed to interest for 10 years for basically what's gonna be a loan. It's different if we're building a capital project, if we're doing something infrastructure-wise, that's different. But in this situation, to me, it makes absolutely no sense that we would potentially, and we're still considering, giving money to somebody for use and we're gonna pay interest for 10 years. And if that's the case, I can tell you unequivocally and the public tonight, I am a no vote. I will not vote yes for that tonight, tomorrow night, Thursday night, next week. I'm a no vote. Thank you.
Alright, well, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin.
Uh, yeah, we need to be at red by now.
Okay, well, this is pretend that's my red light, and then I'll be finished.
Press your red for me, then I won't have to pretend.
Okay, there we go.
Alright.
Okay. Very directly, we've had two budget conversations, and this is where the hesitation comes in for me. We've had two budget conversations, the first of which where we pulled a public safety infrastructure bond off the table. So we've got fire stations that need to be replaced, but we don't have an allocation for them. We have sidewalks and streets that need to be repaired. We have infrastructure that needs to be repaired, but no possibility for an allocation for it. Then we turned around and we had a conversation and we pulled off the table the possibility of, what was the last conversation we had?
Solid waste fee?
Solid waste, the solid waste fee, which created in the budget as it was presented, a half million dollar need to be filled. And so we're looking at how to handle all of these things. The city has a finite amount of resources. That's just a fact. So we're looking at how to handle all these things. And I agree, we should be focused on infrastructure. We should be focused on public safety, absolutely. This 1.5 million dollars, I wish it wasn't even before us completely. But we have already taken so much off the table, and we have so many things that we need to handle, that if we don't have this as an option, I'm just concerned about where we're going to be able to handle the things that we need to handle from our general fund as it stands. And so it's not that I want us to do something irresponsible in terms of borrowing money and paying interest on it unnecessarily. But I wanna make sure that when it comes to people and the sidewalks that they need, and when it comes to these infrastructure concerns that we have that are creating issue after issue after issue in our community, that we still have funding allowed and allocatable in our budget to be able to handle these concerns. And I'm just concerned that if we take this off the table, we do a detrimental service to those other projects, and that's what I don't wanna see happen. And so it is a risk and it is a gamble, but we really have to be very, very forthcoming about the fact that we have not yet gone through our budget in its entirety to be able to know for certain what is needed and how we're going to pay for what is needed for the citizens in our city. And I just, I don't want to see us continue to take stuff off the table without any guarantee that we're going to be able to do the things that are most needed for our citizens. And that's my, that's it. Thank you.
Alright, well, I think everything she named is bondable when it's time to do it, infrastructure.
I pushed my red button, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman? I don't think they have it ready. Councilman Crisp?
Mr. Mayor, I withdraw my motion.
Alright, so we have no motion on the floor, and so that means discussion ends. So we'll look for a motion one way or another. Alright, Mayor Pro Tim?
The motion is to adopt the resolution approving and authorizing the sale and issues of limited obligation bonds and the execution, delivery of second supplemental trust agreement and related documents as presented tonight.
That's a motion by Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Councilmember Waddell. Madam Attorney, hold on a sec. Madam Attorney?
Mayor, I thought that the Mayor Pro Tim was just restating the motion that was on the floor.
He withdrew it. Councilman Crisp withdrew his motion.
He withdrew the second motion?
The second one too, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, alright, so we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim, there was a second by Councilmember Waddell. Yeah, this is, alright, hit your lights again. So we have a motion on the floor by- So we have a motion on the floor by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Waddell. Mr. Dawkins, is that a vote?
That's a, I have a question for Mr. Toler.
All right, let me, okay. So, uh, discussion, yes, sir? Question?
Uh, Jay, thank you. Okay. If the money is borrowed for the parking garage, 1.5 million, it has to be spent on the parking garage?
That's correct.
Okay. Does everybody hear that? Does everybody, does everybody hear that? Okay?
Right.
I'm not in favor of that. That, that gives no incentive to our, our project managers...
To save a dime.
To save us any money. So, no. No.
All right. Uh, all right, so let's, let's vote. All right, so...
I wanna make sure everybody understands, the 1.5 million has to be spent on the parking deck. It can't be spent on sidewalks or anything else. I support Council Lady Waddell's concern about sidewalks. I wanna bond some sidewalks. We need to borrow money and put sidewalks in Bonnie Dune, and we need to borrow money and put sidewalks on Merkison Road. So, you know, when I see this happen, it, it concerns me. And then secondly, and I'll, because I know I just got one minute to go, personal guarantees. We can request our managing directors to sign personal guaran, I'm talking real personal guarantees. I'm not talking about LLC personal guarantees. I'm talking about individual personal guarantees for this money. We can't get personal guarantees on that 14 million we've already got allocated to this deck. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question on the motion.
All right. Councilmember Waddell, this discussion on the motions on the floor?
Never mind.
Never, okay. All right.
I have a question on the motion.
Okay. And push your light for me, Mr. Crisp, so I can...
I did.
Track you. All right. Yes, sir. Okay. You've got the floor.
In discussion this coming Thursday night, can we, is it possible for us to take out the 1.5?
Yes.
Is that possible?
Yes.
Is that legal?
Yes.
We can do that, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is he not?
Yes, we can. We can, he said we could go down, we can't go up.
Yeah, that's...
I do, I cannot prepress my button.
All right. It's, all right, Council, we will, uh, it's time to vote.
We, we need some real clarity right now, because I, I, you get, you've given two answers this evening, and I need to know which one we can base our, our, our movement upon.
Okay.
When we, when we make this vote, if this vote is successful and we say, "Go ahead, do what you need to do," when we come back together on Thursday, because some of us are not in favor of 1.5 million dollars for this, this parking deck. So when we come back, if we say, "We only allow you to do $500,000," just as a generic number, throwing that out there, can you then go back and give back a million of those dollars so that we are not paying...
No.
That's, but that's the question that was just asked. You said we can go down, but we can't go...
That's right.
See, this is, there's no clarity here.
All right, so you can, just, it's, you can go down, so you can eliminate it all the way out, you can carve out and, on Thursday, say, "We don't wanna pay anything that has to do with parking," to carve that whole project out.
But then we still have that debt. Is that what you're saying?
No, I, I don't...
See, that's where there's no clarity.
What do you mean? You still have to, if, if the council decides to, to pay the money, then the money needs to come from somewhere, as you know. So, but if you, if we appro, if we approve this motion as is, you have $7 million, you could come back on Thursday, say carve out the 1.5 for the parking deck, and then you only borrow the, um, so it'd be...
5.5.
7.3, 5.8 with the issuance cost, but we're close enough.
Okay. That's what I, that's what I was under the impression of as we were having...
Just for one more point of clarity, if, if you approve the motion tonight without the parking deck, then on Thursday, you cannot, that's exactly right. Okay.
All right. Did have another question. Mr. Toler, don't go far.
So one more point of clarity, if I may, sir. If, if you wanted to change the 1.5 for the parking deck only to $750,000, that would be acceptable also. It could be zero, it could be half a million dollars, it could be $750,000, it just couldn't go over the 1.5. Does that make sense?
I totally understood it from the start with. Or you can pull the money from somewhere where you have it versus borrowing it.
Right.
And you can choose any amount you want at that point.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, do you know about how much, uh, I heard you say something very interesting? You said the issuance cost and 300, what, thousand?
300,000, yes.
And the issuance cost is based on the size of the bond?
Uh, basically.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. And the interest that you pay for 10 years?
That's market. So we put it out to bid on the 23rd, and so the market will dictate, dictate the...
But the more you borrow, the more you pay, right?
I mean mathematically, yes.
Yeah. All right. Councilman Cullington?
Yes, uh, part of the clarity, I think, was brought forth that I was gonna, uh, present, and that is that this can go down in whatever amounts we'd wish on Thursday or eliminate it altogether, but only if we approve it as is right now, tonight. So I think that's clear hopefully for everybody. As far as the issuance cost, there is the issuance cost, but I thought part of the reason of bringing this forth and wrapping it with the other two projects, because that combines the issuing costs overall. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And so if we don't do this and we choose or we need to go somewhere else, it may cost us more money, and that's what was presented to us when staff had first presented the option of the lob to us. Is that correct?
Right, because currently we don't have any lobs to be sold next year, so then you would be doing this as a standalone issuance, if that was the council's pleasure next year.
And so if we have to take a loan or, whatever way it's gonna cost us money, the only way it won't is if we have that money sitting around somewhere that we could make a use for this instead of something else, should council decide to do this. So, um, I think I, I made my clarity of points. Thank you.
All right, Council, it's time to get it on. All right. All right. So the motion on the floor is to approve as presented, and so ask you for your votes. Uh, Councilman Wright, this is a vote to approve as is or not?
Vote to approve as is or not.
Red.
All right, Madam Clerk, that is, one, two, three, six to four. So those voting in favor, so the motion fails, the votes voting in favor, Councilman Crisp, Cullington, Moan, and Waddell. Those voting against, uh, Councilman Art, Colvin, Jensen, Hare, Dawkins, and Wright. All right? Is there a counter motion? Uh, Councilman Dawkins?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Um, if I could see that resolution back up there again, um, I'm on, the, the motion is going...
You can, you can look on your agenda and use the information on there.
My agenda, I got about 20.
Item 9.01.
I make a motion to approve the sale and issuance of limited obligation bonds for the baseball stadium and a new pool, and that's my motion.
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins to approve, uh, the issuance of the bonds for the additional costs for the baseball stadium as well as the pool. There's a second by Councilmember Art. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes.
All right, Council, I'll look to you for your...
Uh, Councilman Wright?
All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilman Wright?
Green.
Madam Clerk?
Can you clear it so we push him again? I push you to go.
All right. Uh, Council, we'll need you to vote again, and this is a motion to approve, uh, with the exception of, what was extracted?
Parking.
Parking deck. Uh, Councilman Wright and Cullington and Crisp, I need your votes. And Waddell?
Green.
Cullington and Crisp, I need your votes.
All right. All right. Madam Clerk, that motion carries, uh, nine to one. There's voting in opposition, Mayor Protem, Moan. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, and Council, as we look at the last item, let us remember that tonight is a, uh, presentation of the budget that we've talked about extensively and a setting of the public hearing. Yeah, I thought it was just the public hearing setting, but, uh, Mr. Hewitt, we'll go to you.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin and, um, members of the City Council. Um, let's see. Um, tonight, we're here to give you a presentation on the recommended budget for FY 2020, um, and to get started, and probably as I finish as well, I'd like to thank the city staff in particular, Budget and Evaluation Director Tracy Brawls and her staff, as well as the members of the City Manager's Office, who, um, as you know, have put in a lot of hours to get us to where we are tonight. In accordance with the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, um, I am transmitting this proposed budget for FY fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019 through June 30th through 2020. Um, as required by that act, tonight's budget is, that I am proposing to you and recommend it, is a balanced budget. But based upon the conversation that we had with the City Council on last Thursday related to one of the fees as it relates to storm, uh, solid waste, we do know that the council, um, there will be changes to this proposed budget and we'll, the staff works, uh, looks forward to working with the council to make those changes as well. Um, but the total, um, uh, funds across all funds is $228 million. Um, specifically for the general fund, which takes up the majority of our attention, um, it's $173 million. This represents a 2.8% increase in the general fund, and to power this budget, we are recommending that the tax rate remain at 49.95 cents per $100 of evaluation. In preparing the budget, one of the things that we do every year is we, um, talk with the City Council, this time it was in February of this year, and we try to identify what items the council would like us as a staff and as a city to focus on. We call this list of items, um, council's targets for action. And on the screen, um, we have a variety of those items that the council has prioritized. Those include revitalization of the Merkison Road corridor, community revitalization efforts including commercial and residential properties, update on a comprehensive land use plan to manage our future growth, development of a quality stormwater program, development of an internship program, development of smart city capacity through the pursuit of broadband access, improvements in railroad crossing safety at at-grade crossings, and elevating the conversation to combat poverty across the city, as well as the development of a youth, uh, young adult engagement program to promote, um, collaboration and empowerment. Also, um, in developing the budget, we take a look at the council's, um, six goals that you have, and those goals are listed on the screen. Um, they range from a safe and secure, um, community, diverse and viable economy, high quality built environment, a desirable place to live, work, and recreate, sustainable organizational capacity, resident engagement, and partnerships. And with the hopeful adoption of your budget in June, we'll also be asking you to adopt, um, the elements of the strategic plan, which I'll be covering in a little bit greater detail in just a moment. One of the things that we've done over the next couple of slides is trying to highlight for the council and the community what is in the budget to address each one of those goals that we mentioned just a moment ago. And in the interest of time, I won't read all of them, but I will pick a few, which I think, um, uh, may, um, be beneficial, uh, for a fair understanding of what's in the budget. Uh, this budget under goal one, safe and secure community, funds an additional assistant fire chief to oversee the emergency management division. Um, it includes $1.4 million for the final phase of enterprise-wide radio replacement, um, 250, $25,000 rather for neighborhood traffic calming measures, and $50,000 for neighborhood multi-use lane markings, as well as $133,000 for equipment enhancements, enhancements for fire and police departments. Under goal two, um, we have $500,000 for revitalization initiatives to be determined by the City Council. This tracks very closely on the, uh, work session agenda we had, I think, two work sessions ago, where the staff of our Economic Community Development Department, um, outlined several programs which the council appeared to take a great deal of interest in. Um, and so we have included money in the base budget so that, um, when we establish with the council which one of those parties you'd like for us to move forward with, the money is there. There's also $375,000 additional funding for land purchases at the Merkison Road Catalas site, as well as for studies to support redevelopment and marketing of those sites as well. And there's also funding, um, to continue the city's support of the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation. This budget also continues the partnership we have with Cool Springs for contracted management of the downtown, as well as to stand up an arts and entertainment district. Um, there is $264,000 additional funding to replace parking displaced by the downtown baseball stadium, $85,000 for contract grant writing services that would also be part of the neighborhood, uh, revitalization efforts, as well as funds to continue our partnership with Cumberland County Schools for the Icon Youth Internship Program. There's $4.3 million for pavement preservation funding. Um, we're also proposing in this budget a pavement preservation manager to maximize cost effectiveness of this program. There's also $4.36 million for stormwater drainage watershed studies and projects, as well as money to repair stormed, um, damaged Sykes Pond Road, as well as a variety of intersection improvements and, um, standing up a bridge and dam safety preservation program as well. Additionally, under goal three of high quality built environment, we continue our work for, um, the downtown streetscape improvements, um, $50,000 for thoroughfare street lighting, um, $350,000 for, um, municipal agreements and partnership with NC DOT that would include pedestrian improvements at intersections along Morgantown Road between McPherson Church and Skabo, as well as $100,000 for a sidewalk at Clifdale Road. Under goal four, desirable place to live, work, and recreate, it funds an Assistant Economic and Community Development Director on a 50/50 basis with use of federal grant funds. Again, this tracks very closely to the neighborhood revitalization efforts that we brought to council, as position is needed to advance those efforts. Um, it also funds operating costs for the soon-to-be completed new amenities, including Lake Rim Pool, the skate park in Senior Center West, and it continues parks and recreation bond projects to include the Sportsfield Complex, Jordan Soccer Complex, Senior Center East, as well as providing $7.8 million of local funding to continue the Fayetteville Regional Airport terminal renovations. Also under goal four, um, tracking on what we talked about tonight for our FAST system, it funds an additional dispatcher for Fast Track, paratransit services, and a technician specialized, um, uh, to handle transit equipment, uh, $257,000 for continuation of the Cape Fear River Trail, and a $100,000 to continue the partnership with Cumberland County to fund strategies to assist homeless citizens. Under goal five, sustainable organizational capacity, it funds police officer, firefighter, and emergency telecommunications step plans, as well as providing 2% merit pay increases for employees not on step plans, and funds a market-based pay range adjustments, um, for nine months, um, starting in October of 2019, and it also includes the required employer contributions for pension and medical benefits. Under goal five as well, um, it advances the $4.2 million Enterprise Resource Planning System, that replacement initiative, um, as well as funding two dedicated positions. We've been very clear, um, when we've talked to council about this, that, um, this has been, um, a long time in coming, but we wanna make sure that we do this and do it right. This will become our enterprise-wide backbone for our business, um, and how we manage our funds, as well as our employee, um, software systems. It also funds $1.1 million for a variety of technology capital projects, as well as $150,000 to develop standard operating procedure manuals for solid waste stormwater, as well as organizational and management analysis for the Public Services Department, as well as $75,000 to study the opportunity for an intergovernmental agreement with Fort Bragg to possibly provide solid waste collection services to the post. Under goal six, uh, resident engagement and partnerships, um, it provides $48,000 to partner with the Friends of the Park for operations of the Fascinate You Children's Museum, um, $75,000 for the Arts Council of Fayetteville Cumberland County to partner for community arts programs, um, $50,000 for our community, um, rebranding efforts. Um, it also provides funding for our biennial citizen survey, as well as, um, $53,000 for lead for NC Management Fellow in partnership with the University of North Carolina School Looking at some of the revenue highlights, again, the general, uh, tax rate proposed to remain at 49.95 cents per $100 of property valuation. Um, as we discussed in our small group meetings and at our first, uh, budget work session last Thursday, um, taxable property growth has been moderate and, and has improved somewhat. The average annual percentage increase in the tax base from January 2009 until January 2017 was 1.73%, um, and estimated growth, um, this year... 2017 was 1.73%, um, and, uh, estimated growth, um, this year over the original budget, um, recommended budget is 1.6%. Uh, first year property tax collections are projected to be at almost 70 million dollars, um, 1.6% over the FY 2019 budget, or 0.084% above the FY 2019 projection. The table in, um, on the screen now talks about projected taxable values. I think what, um, I'd really point your attention to is the fact that when you look at the, uh, projected variance or the growth of these, um, we're doing well, um, comparatively on motor vehicles, um, real property has grown very slightly, uh, personal property as well, and then the public service property, um, almost, um, nil. Just gonna switch on there. Um, revenue highlights, uh, general fund and intergovernmental revenues, projected sales tax distributions, um, for FY 20 are 44 million dollars, uh, 3.7 cents above the FY 2019 projection, and 4.1% above the FY 2019 budget. Um, utility tax distributions for FY 20 are 13 million dollars or 0.2% above, uh, uh, above, uh, FY 2019 projection, or 2.3% above the FY 19 budget. And as we talked about during the, um, budget work session on Thursday, um, staff, um, has all of the details as to, um, those various, uh, changes in the revenue highlights. Um, general fund intergovernmental revenues, um, as you know, we, um, with our Public Works Commission, we have a payment in lieu of taxes, and it is based on 2.45% of the electric fund net assets. Um, for FY 20, that is going to be above 11 million dollars, or about 1.5% above FY 2019. It also includes, um, the economic development payments, um, that have, um, provided for several years, 1.2 million dollars, um, that funding the council is dedicated to the, um, stadium project, and those payments continue through FY 2021 in total, um, since the beginning until the end of 6 million dollars. Um, FY 2020 includes 2.8 million dollars in planned loan proceeds for vehicles and equipment purchases in the general fund. Um, it also includes 4.1 million dollar appropriation from general fund fund balance for non-recurring uses, and projected available fund balances, the mayor mentioned earlier tonight, um, at the end of FY 2020 is 23.5 million, or 13.87% of the FY 20 budget expenditures. And as the mayor also mentioned, um, that is 3.2 million dollars above, um, the council's goal of 12%, and some 6.6 million dollars above the council policy of 10%. As we discussed at last week's, um, budget work session, again, um, staff proposal for the residential solid waste fee for, um, FY 20 was a dollar and 25 per month increase, um, but, um, the council, um, has given staff direction that we will be making those modifications, um, probably at the end of, um, our third budget work session, um, which is not this week, but the week following, where we will do a roll-up of all of the changes that council has in the budget, um, so that it can hopefully go through a public hearing and adoption sometime in early June. Along with those other revenue highlights, um, the stormwater fee, um, it's no change proposed in this budget. The current fee is $6 per month per equivalent residential unit or ERU. Uh, the central business tax district, uh, tax rate is remain, recommended to remain the same at 10 cents. The Lake Valley Drive MSD tax rate is recommended to also remain the same at 39.4 cents, and the transit fares, no proposed, proposed changes, except for the implementation of reduced-cost semester passes for Fayetteville State Methodist at FTCC students, as, um, Randy Hume mentioned earlier tonight. So mayor and council, um, our next steps are, um, we will have a budget work session this Thursday, May 16th, followed by another one on May 23rd. Um, tonight, we're asking that the council set the public hearing for the budget for Tuesday, May 28th. Um, the recommended budget is available for public inspection in the office of the city clerk, as well as on the city's website, and it is our hope, um, that the council, um, at the conclusion of the budget work sessions, and that we will have as well, scheduled as well as any others that the council, um, uh, would like, that the council would be able to adopt the budget, the CIP and the TIP, along with the strategic plan and fee schedule on Monday, June 10th. With that said, mayor, that's the end of the presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, council, before we, uh, start lighting up like a Christmas tree here, remember our budget questions we need to submit to Ms. Broyle, so she won't be able to really answer them on the fly. Uh, tonight was just a presentation of the budget, proposed budget to council, uh, and setting up the public hearing, so, thought I saw Councilmember Chris, Hare, and then Dawkins, and I hope that Mr. Henderson is still here, so tomorrow's paper will reflect that this is a proposed budget, not the budget, so. All right, Councilman Chris.
I may be premature, I was gonna do a motion to set the public hearing for 28th of, uh, 28th of, of May.
All right, all right, well Sergeant Major, I think I, uh, uh, had a motion by Councilmember Chris to, uh, make, uh, and Dawkins, to, uh, set the public hearing and to receive a proposed budget. Councilman Hare, was that a?
And if there are no questions, I mean, I will, uh, submit mine to Mrs. Bro.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Go move forward the motion.
Uh, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Uh, Councilman Wright?
Green.
He said green, man.
Green.
All right, Councilman Wright is green. All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, council, with that, look for a motion to adjourn.
So move, sir.
Have a good evening.